I want to say adjourn and it's not.
You were making Anthony very happy.
All right, it was a late night for many of us last night. So, for roll call, Jessica Hamilton's not able to be here tonight as is Scott Cuddy. And I think everybody else is.
Jim Beans.
And Jim Beans.
And Reagan is on vacation, so Trish will put this to Steve.
Welcome Trish. I'm sure Reagan is enjoying her vacation. All right, we received a copy of our meeting minutes from our October 3rd meeting, which we'll do that one unless somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes for both the October 3rd and the October 20th.
I'd like to make a motion to do just that, for both at the same time.
I'd like to disagree because I wasn't at the second meeting and I'd like to see a slight revision to the October 3rd meeting.
Sure, do you mind withdrawing your motion for me? Okay, so we have, we'll do October 3rd, so.
Make the motion to approve October 3rd.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion or amendments?
Well, I would like to see amendment, the one where it mentions that I was referencing talking about the first teacher who wanted to be a legislator and whether or not there was a right to leave of absence. And just the wording of it, I would just want to add the phrase, you know, because I think it says actually is a leave of absence and then maybe that looks a little confusing, so we just want to add the phrase, you know, as opposed to partial leaves of absence.
So as opposed, the amendment or the motion on the floor is to amend that sentence as with the language?
As opposed to partial absences.
And is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Can I have a motion second on that? We need to vote on that amendment first. So can I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion? All those in favor of the amended motion? Okay?
I have a correction. I had just asked for, to have an opportunity to see the survey that the students would be, or that Lucas would be sending out to the students, but I wasn't interested in the results and I think something in there suggests that.
The results?
Yeah, I was, I just love seeing them. That kind of thing, I don't need to see a copy of the results. I'm assuming he'll report on that, so it was just the survey itself, I was curious.
And where's that?
Page four.
I can't even get where we are.
Oh, yeah.
Strike in the compiled answers.
Thanks, thank you very much.
So, the motion is to amend the sentence to strike the compiled answers portion of that sentence. Have a second on the amended motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any other discussion? Great, the motion on the floor is as amended. All those in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? We have left. Thank you, all right. Now we have the minutes from our October 22nd meeting. I'll ask for a motion to approve those.
So.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections on that? All those in favor? Any opposed and abstentions? Joe Lester and Rob and Marion.
Joe Lester, Rob and Marion.
Okay, we do have an adjustment to the agenda that was sent to us in our board packet.
Yes, we're going to put that on there, I have a 12D. Main school management has made some adjustments with their dental program. They require each school district that has a program with them to also adjust that. As I mentioned with John Holmes, we only have two people in this dental plan, that's Axie myself and David Green here. The teachers are on their Delta dental, so they have two different plans.
Would anyone from the audience like to address the board this evening? I do have a couple of things to report out. First, we did get a blank template for the committee assignments. Rick and I worked together to assign board members their committees through the month of December, through November and we'll announce that for our December meeting to make it official. We would ask that you send us your top three committee choices, please, after tonight's meeting as soon as possible. That would be appreciated for those who have already done that, thank you very much. And do you have anything else to add?
No, actually if you just want to email either Karen or me just your top three, whatever more convenient for you.
We have, we try to keep people limited to two committees. If you really desire to be on three, let us know, but we will do our best to make it so that it's, everybody is within two. And if we have a third committee, we'll talk to you before we make that assignment. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate Jim, Joe and Tony for their reelections. Great to have you back at the table. Also want to congratulate Lester for his win as a writing candidate and it's very, it's lovely to have you at the table as well Lester, so welcome.
Thank you.
And also want to give a great congratulations to Scott Cuddy, who won his election last night as well. And I was hoping he'd be here tonight, but very happy for him. So, with that said, personnel?
Okay, under nominations, we have one this evening. If you reference your agenda notes, that is the Hampton Academy Boys' Freshman Basketball, Oscar Deenan. You can see he has coaching experience at Rees-Brook and also he stays at University of Maine. He's stipend $2,845. My nomination for your endorsement, Oscar Deenan, boys freshman basketball coach here at Hampton Academy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep, as a reminder, these are all posted every year.
Yes, sir, they are. As a matter of fact, I'm glad you mentioned that. For new board members, this is a change that we instituted a couple of years ago. In the May timeframe, all these positions are posted. So we're actually open that every single year.
We're going to superintendent, report.
Reading essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation is Amanda.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Amanda. Before I turn it over to Assistant Principal Raymond and Sergeant Stewart, I just wanted to introduce, maybe for the benefit of the public, in my opinion, as the superintendent, the vaping situation in our school and many schools in the state of Maine throughout the country is a very serious concern. Mr. Raymond's actually been diligent to educate me over the last couple of months because if you would've asked me three or four months ago what vaping is, I would've had no idea. I probably have still no idea, but I have a better understanding. But as I indicated to the board in the agenda notes, in the first 45 days approximately of school, we have suspended 11 students in our district for vaping, 11. As a matter of fact, I met with a student in one of our schools, a middle school student and parents yesterday. So, Mr. Raymond's going to present to us some information he has along with Sergeant Stewart and the purpose of this is basically to inform and educate the board, if you're not aware of this, as a board member number one, and number two, as a parent. So with that, Nick, if you would, and Dan Stewart, all yours. As a matter of fact, these two gentlemen presented a couple of weeks ago at the Maine Principal Association Conference and we have some excellent reports back on these people, so. I promise, these are not objects that I purchased myself or used. These are all confiscated items. So these all came in the last, I would say, last five to six years. As Mr. Ly has mentioned, Dan and I did a presentation down in the Assistant Principals Conference a couple of weeks ago. We presented to probably about 15 to 20, it was a breakout session, so we had about 15, 20 assistant principals at the time in our group. Put together this board just to show people out there what is out there. I would dare say that most people around the table may not be able to tell what those are. But as we started talking about them, I think the assistant principals around the table knew what was going on for the most part. But I would dare say getting outside of that board or that particular room, most people would not have an idea. The vape products now are clearly marketed to students. There is absolutely no question. But this board depicts kind of a then and now. Then representing what we used to have, not that we don't have it anymore, but what we used to have confiscated. And the bottom part, which is below the charger, the vaping charger, is the last couple of years. The first e-cigarette that was confiscated here was this one and that's where we developed into our policy, our substance abuse policy, we incorporated e-cigarettes in, and that was probably about four years ago. Sure. I'm going to pass them around too, so you can see them. But we are in, what I would say clearly is an epidemic when it comes to vaping. And it's not just Hampton Academy, it's not just the Bangor area, it's not just the state of Maine, it is throughout the country. Throughout the country, this is definitely marketed, as I mentioned, to students with different flavors, which we'll pass around in a second. But all of the ones that we have confiscated contain nicotine. And that's what we base all of the consequences on. If there is nicotine in it, then it certainly violates our policy. So what I'm going to do right now, Dan's passing around a few different devices. I'm going to pass around the other direction. If you want to keep it in the bag, because some of them may have leaked and they're kind of disgusting, to be honest. I have washed them out, but, or at least sanitized them, but just keep them in there, you'll see what it looks like. I do have a couple extras on hand if you want to actually smell it. And I promise, they don't smell terrible, they smell very fruity. So it kind of gives you an idea what they are. At the bottom of the board is all the vape juice. Vape juice comes in a variety of different sizes, flavors. There's 15,000 different flavors out there that one could buy. 10 years ago, Chinese pharmacist developed, designed what is known currently as the modern e-cigarette. So 10 years ago, I would say the last 12 to 18 months, this, the sales of particular e-cigarettes or vaping devices has grown exponentially. Specifically, I just need to see where it is, the Juul. It's this one right here. Okay, that's that one, right there. Can I just borrow that for a second? I was going to, part of my demonstration, I was going to actually take these vaping devices and hide them because they're very easy to conceal and that's the issue that we're having. Because I can easily conceal this underneath my watch and if I needed to, I could smoke it in a classroom and then put it underneath my sweatshirt or shirt and blow up the vapor. And that's what is going on, ladies and gentlemen, I promise you. Again, not just here, but everywhere.
There have been videos online where kids are telling other kids how to vape in class, not get caught, and they'll take the hit. And then they'll sit there and they'll pull up their hoodie and go, like they're being very polite and coughing into their shirt. And what they're doing is they're coughing the vapor into their hoodie so it doesn't show. And that Juul that's going around, that's one of the more popular ones. If you walk into Irving, for example, you'll see it right in the door for sale here. They, the cartridges are very small. As a matter of fact, I got one taken around here somewhere. Right here? Oh, at least. Why do you always put the drop? So, these are little cartridges, the liquid is in there. These tend to be a little expensive, so what we're finding now is the, they're buying the bottles which are going around. In those bottles, they can refill the cartridges and reuse them. What's going to be coming out shortly, when Maine has finished their work on the edibles and all that type of thing with marijuana, is there's going to be potential for smoking that in these things too? Can I borrow that just for a moment? If you look at this, it does kind of look like a thumb drive. This plugs into your computer port and it magnetically sits right there and charges the device up while it's sitting in a device just like that. So, anybody walking by says, oh, look, they got their thumb drive stuck in their computer doing work. No, they're just charging up their device for the next hit. So, that's the way these things work. The little one I call a giant guitar pick, which he's holding, that's just another version of a vape device there. But the Juul by far is the most, most used one. And if you look at the flavors, like Mr. Raymond has said, they're Hawaiian tropical fruit, cotton candy, there's a variety of flavors and it's all kind of aimed at kids. They'll deny it, but that's what they're marketed for.
If we're not seeing vape devices around, some things that we're seeing are these little caps. And these caps, you can see them on top of the, or on the bottom of the pods. They call those the Juul pods. So that's a good indication that there might be vaping going on. If you're a parent and you happen to see something like that hanging around your house, you might want to raise the question of where did that come from? And I think that's what we're trying to do also when we deal with some of the kids that we've dealt with, is educating the parents. Because more often than not, they don't have any idea of what's going on. We find all kinds of things throughout their bags when we actually do a search and they're just not aware of what's going on. And so we try to educate them and tell them what to look for, different things. The little charger that Dan mentioned, one may not know exactly what it is, but the question has to come up for parents.
So Nick and Dan, right now, I hear you saying, they're basically vaping nicotine right now.
Correct.
What do we, in your estimation, what would you anticipate in the next year or two will occur?
Depending on how the marijuana laws are crafted, down the road, we're looking at the potential for vape pens that would have that material in it, once that market starts. Colorado, those type of places, they're using that type of thing. They're also using a lot of edibles. And the edibles they have down there are kind of twist on names. He was showing me, what was the Captain Crunch?
Captain Grunch, I think.
Captain Grunch or something like that. So, they have marijuana infused cereals, they have marijuana infused gummy bears, pixie sticks, that's all the consumables that are for sale in like Colorado and that type of place. When Maine gets their rules in order, that's the kind of stuff we're going to start seeing. So, it's kind of an eye-opening for us, staff and that type of thing, of what we actually need to be looking at. It's part of the problems had in Colorado. For example, a marijuana infused, or cannabis infused candy bar, the serving size was just one little square. But how many people buy a candy bar and eat a square at a store? Especially if you're ingesting a drug that tends to give you lungies. So we were having people that were eating an entire bar and they were having adverse reactions and then got in the emergency room. So, this is a learning thing for us right now. The vape pens is what we're seeing the most of because that's legal here right now. Once this other stuff starts coming online, we're going to have to be a lot more vigilant of what we're seeing in the schools.
Dan, let's step outside the school environment for a moment. Can you share with us what you're able to share with us? This happening in our communities, outside the walls of the school.
Well, if we look at it, our school is a reflection of our community. So if it's going on here, it's definitely going on outside. Because kids tend to bring in what's out there. So, again, you can go to any, any of the local stores and buy a Juul kit, well, you've got to be old enough. It's being treated as an alcohol, I mean, excuse me, as a tobacco product. So there's 21-year age limit unless you're in that little time when they changed the law. So if you're 18, by a certain date, you can still buy tobacco. So, you've got to be a certain age to buy. But the courts right now, we're treating it as if we end up summoning somebody to court, it's a violation of using a tobacco product because of the nicotine that they're putting in it.
I also, before, I'm part of the Public Safety Advisory Committee and Chris Bailey is head of that. And so I asked him to develop, when we come back, the next time when we meet, the trends for students getting caught with vaping products.
So there's been a lot of talk across paths with a lot of teenagers. There's actually gaming platforms, online gaming, and kids are ordering vape pens, juices and everything on their games, their Xbox Ones, their Playstation 4s. And they're having them shipped right to their house and they're ordering stuff from Colorado where it is legal. So the stuff's already in our community.
Oh, yeah.
As far as the THC infused juices. And kids are ordering it right off of their Xboxes and Playstations.
You can go to any one of these vaping websites and all you have to do, I think, is just confirm that you're old enough by hitting either yes or putting a date of birth in and you'll get free access to anything there.
Do we know what the?
What are the studies in terms of, just assuming nicotine, what are the studies in terms of how safe the chemicals are, how dangerous they are? Being in our classroom, secondhand smoke, that sort of thing?
E, a lot of the byproducts of the vaping pens are, can be heavy metals, lead, that type of thing that are, that are a byproduct of this. There's other chemicals, they're concerned about popcorn lung in a, being in an effect of using these. The problem is, they haven't been out that long, there's not a lot of data on it, so it's starting to come in. So, as more stuff comes in, we start saying, oh, this isn't good. Yeah, something I was just looking at this afternoon, saying that, you know, using, bringing these chemicals in before the mine's fully developed is, is changing the way the brain is developing and that type of thing. So sadly, it's going to be down the road when all of a sudden these studies start coming back saying XYZ is happening, the door's open and I will get to deal with it. So, as, as more studies come in and more information comes in, we'll know better what it's doing to the body. Some trends are saying, instead of this being a way to get off tobacco products, is now it's getting kids hooked on the nicotine and they're switching to smoking after they started using the vape pens. So it's kind of having a reverse effect of what they thought it would be.
In terms of prevention and education, have there been discussions about what we're doing for our elementary education in terms of prevention? I think Brittany's done a good job, but I also think it's, we're bound to see these products more and more in the middle school level. And I, you know, my, my son's going into sixth grade next year, he wouldn't know what would be offered to him and the dangers of that unless he was receiving some education. Certainly as a parent, I have a responsibility in that, but I'm wondering if we're integrating more vaping and the risk of this addictive behavior, because it is addictive in the classroom setting?
Mary, you have? We have been revising and making some additions and shifts to the middle level health curriculum. And so that is beginning to be addressed and will start being addressed at grade six. And there'll be some follow-up past that, but we wanted to get that in early. Unfortunately, we need to deal with that sooner than obviously we would like to, but.
The edibles piece of that, knowing that's coming down the pike is also very scary for, for all of us, I think.
Well, and in the fact, it could be easily mistaken. If, if mom or dad and older brother, sister, whatever, have their edibles and a little one sees it and says, I'm taking that to school, I'm going to share it with my friends, thinking it is gummy bears and not realizing it's infused gummy bears, there's going to be issues down the road. I mean, that's happened before when people have got into like mom or dad stash of homemade brownies and then bring them to school and share them with kids, not realizing what was in it. So, definitely education on the student level, but staff too. We've got to get staff up to speed. And we have been going around doing that as best we can. But if you guys decide you want it to be more a top priority, then you guide us and we'll do what you would like us to do.
I actually passed the devices around at a faculty meeting so that the teachers could see it, hold it and know what to look for. And I know that I had two people come up to me and say, I never knew what that was. So, that was helpful for us.
Can I speak for, I would say, after you did the presentation, I was one of the ones, like about a week later, happened to see something pass in the hallway. And if it wasn't for the presentation, I wouldn't have known what it was. But since Nick did the presentation, I brought the student or students down to him. So I know Cabola staff in the math department. It's been very helpful because up to this year, it looked like a thumb drive. So, the presentation, I know it's helped me have caught some students.
Between next drawer and my safe, we managed to get this and Mr. Moore was nice enough to make the display for us so that we can have a hands-on type thing where people can see what this looks like, what it feels like, so it's not as much as a mystery. Like I say, especially those Juuls where they just plug right into the side of a device, looks like somebody's just got their thumb drive stuck in and who would even think anything of it?
So gentlemen, I'm a parent, my children are not in middle school and high school anymore. What suggestion would you have for me if my child was in middle school or high school?
I think just asking the question and constant monitoring, awareness of these devices and awareness of the components to those devices. Now, we have, I have chargers in here that one may think is just for a simple phone and that's typically what we hear when a student, when it's pulled out of their bag, there's my phone charger. But if you look at it closely, it has the product of a vape device and it's just a simple type it into Google if you're not sure and there you have it, option one and two is a vape device. So, I think just awareness, education and constant communication with family and students.
So how could we get the word out to, to parents? Because like you just said, I mean, like those, some of those things, I would probably pick that off my floor at my house and lug it to my kid and say, oh, you lost your thumb drive. Are you kidding? I would have no idea, you know?
Maybe we as a district have to put a little mailing together of some pictures. Here are things to look for.
Nick, we probably can't, I don't think we can do it now, but maybe a nice, nice, that's not the right word. Maybe an appropriate publication, a link 22, to really draw the attention in our March distribution. We can tee it up that way. I mean, we send 6,000 of those out, we put it on our website. That's, that's one way we can do it.
And another thing is, is having the display, maybe somebody come along so when you're having a PTO night or a parent teacher conference night, have a table set up in the lobby that, you know, stop by, you can look at it, see what it is, that type of thing, to keep the parents informed. Because again, you know, you don't deal with it, you have no idea what it is. You would be dragging it back saying, I think you dropped this, I hope it's not important. And yeah, that is, that's my argument.
So when we confiscate those, obviously they don't get it back. Are the parents, because I'm sure some of those are expensive? Are parents resistant or giving a hard time about that at all?
Never, never. These are the most expensive, these are probably 60 to 75 dollars. The second one, it's a little more sophisticated. The Juul device, I think I went on the Juul website and I think the device, four pods and a charger is 40 bucks.
Nick, you deal with the children more, students more than I do, but following up on John's question, how would you describe the demeanor of those parents that you call up and say, Rick, do you realize that your son has been vaping in school? What's the, how do the, how do the parents react to that?
I think they're embarrassed, number one, and I think they're very surprised because they don't necessarily know everything that's going on.
And don't even know what it is.
Right. I mean, we've had a couple right in the office that we've educated just like we're doing right now and they have no idea.
Well, the parent that we met with last week in my office was totally shocked that was happening in their own home.
Correct.
I guess, yeah, listening to Tony's description, you know, with, with the Amazon deliveries arriving in two days here, I was thinking that we have the ability to keep it out of our community a little bit longer because it wasn't manufactured locally, but it sounds like. You know, we've turned down three projects that had varying degrees of clients, shall we say Rhode Island, Miami, or a group that sounded like they were very well financially backed, like a, you know, like a commercial business that we're looking at grow facilities that had the ability to have a lab for cannabinoid extraction as well as a retail space when and, and not if, but when the state finally allowed it to happen. And we declined all three. I don't want, with our federal work, having that kind of cash running through business and on moral grounds. But I'll tell you, when and if it is made or extracted locally, again, I'm not so sure it's going to have, it's not going to make it better, but the gaming thing is just an eye-opener. I mean, that, that can be here as fast as a kid driving across the street.
When you go into the store in Winnport next time, you'll see right there in the front, on the door, the advertising as you're, you're not even in the store yet and you can read it right there before you.
And I mean, if you've got older brothers, siblings, whatever the case may be, or you say, I'll give you a couple bucks going in the store, same way alcohol. I mean, you can go to any local stores and buy vape accessories now. So it's just having that connection with somebody that's old enough to go in and buy it and they've got it. So, you know, you could probably have it in 30 minutes if you know the right person, run down the store and have it back in the building. So, it's, it's here, we need to be aware of it. Having more staff know what the things look like, having up close personal, touching it, feeling it, seeing what it looks like, so they're not caught off guard. And, you know, the telltale signs of the little caps they drop because they've put new juice supply in, you know, we need staff being, looking for that type of thing. new juice supply in, you know, we need staff being, looking for that type of thing.
Community relations, look at how to get the word out, or do you have any education?
Very.
So, our response to finding a student with this apparatus is expulsion, is that what I heard you say?
Suspension, suspension.
Suspension.
Mr. Raymond.
Out of school suspension.
Well, you want to respond?
In school.
First, first offense is typically a three-day suspension, and depending on what we have for availability for sub-coverage, monitor coverage for an in-school suspension, depends on whether they'll be in school or out of school. I will say, as of late, our in-school suspension is very limited, because we have one individual who will staff that right now, who has been effective. And that individual has not been available very often, but we're, you know, in the process of trying to consider alternatives to that in-school suspension. But they, we haven't gotten anywhere with it. So first offense is usually three-day suspension, second offense is probably about a five-day suspension, and a referral to law enforcement. And then at that point, just from past experiences, it's a civil infraction, very similar to a speeding ticket, it's a fine, and that's it.
Are you finding it effective, that approach?
We have had...
I've got three going to court right now, as repeat offenders. So, if, if the school piece didn't work, and they're returning, then they kind of get numb with a fine, and hopefully it'll get their attention, so we'll have to wait and see if, after this has made its way through court, if they continue to offend or not. And I, I usually defer to have school discipline tried first, because you guys have a much better list of things you can do, you can, you know, do the suspension, if you've got a staff member in a school suspension, you can get them caught up on work. You know, there's community, there's all kinds of different options that you guys have, where I just give them a summons and they end up paying a fine. So I normally defer unless there's something really egregious, and let Mr. Raymond deal with it the first time, and if it's, that learning experience didn't work, then we try monetary.
I also, Mary, I get involved, usually if I have the second suspension with Mr. Raymond, I also will meet with the parents. Sometimes I'll actually meet with them on a first occasion, which I did with the middle school child this time. And we had one last year, my, my involvement is to let them know, this is obviously not accepted, we're concerned about the welfare of the student, and also know when you leave today, today, that if the infraction occurs in R S U twenty-two, this is the next step. John, the Behavior Review Committee met with the family last year, when we brought Mr. Raymond to the Behavior Review Committee, to outline which expectations, getting back to the board, directors' expectations, policies, and rules as well. So we have processes in place, but I think while we're all sitting here trying to come up with the magical thing that says, how do we, how do we eliminate this, so we don't have to deal with this? That's, that's the ideal world, right, but we're not there.
Remind me, which, which school, the middle school incident happened at?
It was Wagner Middle School. Any other questions from the board? Gentlemen, thank you for the information, appreciate it.
You got any samples still out, or they all going to get back?
They may have been bought.
Okay. Everything that is up over there.
They never even swore an oath in that for a minute.
You better come over to the office, come over to the office tomorrow.
Okay, on a different note, I wanted to let you know the, the federal budget, it's pretty staggering, but what I wanted to just highlight a couple, if you're on the page and talk about Title One and Title Two, I want you to notice what the President's request was, and also how it passed in the Senate. Reminding board members that we have a fair amount of money for these Wagner Middle School and the Smith Elementary School, those are Title One and Title Two school recipients. We have Title Two, which primarily is focused on professional development funds, Title One supports our literacy teachers. So my purpose tonight is very simple, just to let you know, we need to pay attention to this, Rob, as the budgets evolve over the next one, two, or three or four years. So if we have any indication that Title One and Title Two is in jeopardy, we're going to have to be very responsive for that. Now, Mary is our overseer of the Title One and Title Two. Title Two, Mary, you said is around seventy-five thousand dollars?
Approximately seventy-five thousand.
What would you estimate Title One to be, Mary?
About three hundred and forty thousand.
All right, so you're over four hundred thousand dollars of money that comes from the federal government to support Title One and Title Two in our school district. So the purpose again is just to be aware of it, you can obviously see the, the significant lines and funds that come from the federal government, migratory education and so on, but Title One, Title Two is basically my theme tonight.
And Title One goes to Winnport, right?
Yes. Title One towns only, Winnport.
And the state withhold the equal amount, equal to the amount we received?
No, good, good point. They withdrew that, this year was the first year where they did not penalize for receiving metrics, right? They should take that off her, yeah, right.
So it truly is supplemental now?
Rob, yes, Rob brought up a great point. So let's say we receive four hundred thousand dollars from the federal government. Up until this year, when you had your, your, what we call our two seventy-nine, that Lester and I were talking about tonight, which is our fiscal blueprint, if we had eighteen million covered in the state, they took four hundred thousand off, and now we're seventeen million six hundred. They do not penalize us for that now. So it truly supplements us supplies.
That's good news.
That's good news.
For this year's budget, we'll have that much more inserted.
Yeah, so we want to make sure that Representative Cuddy and Representative Hagan, which we have some assets here, hear these words from us. So basically, just be informed that we need to pay attention as the federal budget develops itself. Now, the next one is one that I'm going to try to be very cautious tonight, because I have a lot of passion on this one, and I have a lot of opinions, but I'm going to keep it brief tonight. So if you take this little thing here and unfold it, and if you scanned it, you're going to see what has been inserted in public education in one hundred years, approximately. So let's pick on nineteen seventy, for example, where you see special education and gift in town, those two kind of resonate with us. But you can just get the feel for it with respect to all the influence that has been poured into the gallon container. But my opinion is, we have more fluid outside, but the gallon container won't hold. And you notice the, in the blue box, I'm down to the blue box, and we have not added a single minute to the school calendar in eight decades. Now, we have educators around the table here, and I am saying, this is not a, an epidemic, but I conveyed to the administrative team yesterday, as I looked around the team, that's our next decade or two of leadership, not me. So I had a plea with them to be innovative and be creative, that we need to continue to look at how we're going to modify the school calendar and how we, how we have our public education in not only our state, but our country. As Mr. Tracy pointed out, the high school level, yes, we made some changes, but they're, they're nominal changes, they're minor changes. So I'm encouraging leaders in the twenty-first century and school boards to be creative, because we cannot, in my opinion, we cannot run public education in the twenty-first century with the twentieth century model, we simply cannot. I mean, it is stunning when you think about it. The day is all, it's still eight to two, primarily, right, or nine to three, if you have a draw, whether it be, that's been, what has been forever, that's what has been when we were in school. So take this home and look at it, and you're going to say, I remember this, depending on what decade you're in, I remember this, I remember this, I remember this. But you haven't changed the silo, the silo walls are still permanent. And my further opinion, that I'll stop, is if we don't change public education, public education will be a thing of the past. Any comments, reactions, or opinions on this? Jane?
No, I mean, I would say that every year, when you went to your first teacher meeting, it was all the new things that you had to put into your day. And I remember asking once, well, what are we taking out? Knowing there wasn't anything, just kind of maybe that point, because where are you going to put it? And what happened, I think what I found happened is you did everything just a little bit less. So nothing was done as well as it was before, because you didn't have the time. It's, it's a huge opportunity for them.
So look what we talked about fifteen minutes ago, about how our desire to address this thing, this event that's happening around us, and schools be somewhat responsible for It's the same thing, is it not? And you want to have any questions on how maybe this hit you when you were in the school in the seventies and eighties and nineties?
It was a pretty short list, we could actually focus on learning and education and not all the other, just look at all the additional, supplemental information. So at the university, on the advisory board college in the area, we were faced with a situation with A B A T, where we need to keep adding, what you see, non-engineering supplemental prerequisites to the program, and it kept driving up the credit hours, where the pressure to stay competitive with other colleges, so that kids could graduate in four years, cannot have twenty credit hours, which is what we had when we started, didn't work out so well. They're now trying to target around fifteen credit hours a semester, and the max is eighteen, recommended now. And we were faced with one, we either start cutting engineering classes, or say, you know what, it may take longer than four years. And our entire board said, we want to keep the courses, we went against the tide and said, it may take longer. And they've been turning away applicants now for two and a half years because of high turnout, because the parents want kids to get an engineering education, and they're trying to get into these other things, but it wasn't instead of. And the difference is, that extra semester comes with a payment theoretically to the university system, so there's compensation. But in our school district, if we said, okay, it's going to take just four and a half years now to get through high school, because of the protection things, I mean, that's coming in tax payers' pocket, or the years after it longer.
Let me, let me give one more opinion, then I'll stop. Following up on what Rob ended his conversation. It is my opinion that our faculty should be working a longer year and paid appropriately. For example, I think faculty should be compensated for working two hundred and five days, I like two hundred and five. And therefore, they can do their professional development, and they can extend their, their toolkit, enhance their toolkit if they will. This past year, I granted over sixteen hundred professional development days during the school year. That means we lost sixteen hundred instructional days from our teachers. Why can't we do professional development in July and August and pay people? Somehow, if I were the commissioner or governor for the day and had a magic wand, I would do that. I don't have proof, getting back to Andrew's question earlier, that, that's going to work, but I would make the argument, it's better than how we're doing it now. So there's an example of what I'm thinking. So with that, I'll stop. Any other comments, Marian?
I was just at the conference when this was presented, it was presented by the individual doing the keynote speech, and he was talking about using this in the community, boards using this in the community to begin a conversation about what schools are asked to do, and, and addressing the issue of budgets for that, and what kind of structural changes need to happen in our public school systems in order to accommodate everything that is being asked of our schools. So I think this is a, a great visual, I just don't know how to get it out into the community so the community can begin to interact with it themselves.
I don't want to put pressure on Mary Giard, but, but our current structure allows us to have these conversations at the grassroots with the education committee. How does this tie into education, pedagogy, instructional practices, the calendar, et cetera? And that's where the conversation, again, as Lester and I are talking tonight, can generate itself at the subcommittee level and then bring it into the boardroom.
And how do we get it out into the community?
Yeah, that's a good question.
So the parents, seventy-five percent of the people in our communities don't have children in school. Seventy-five percent was the statistic that was thrown out. We need to reach those seventy-five percent of people, and this is a great visual to do that. So if we can just think about how maybe we might be able to bring this out into the community, how is it ways to do that?
Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, our student reps.
All right. So earlier this week, we did end up sending out the student survey to all four grades, and we received an overwhelming number of responses, which is awesome. We got a hundred and eighty-seven students to respond to our entire seven-question survey.
Twenty-five percent.
Wow.
Yeah. That's awesome.
So, I was definitely not expecting that number of responses, and I have an entire spreadsheet with all the data compiled, but I think to, to give it an adequate review, I'd have to actually make a presentation with all that information. I don't think I'd be able to explain it all clearly, spurkly, so.
Yeah, I think visually, it would be helpful for you guys to see the responses, and like Lucas said, the turnout, how many people did respond, was really great. I think it had something to do with it being at the beginning of the week, and having like an A A sort of time where people could, which is basically homeroom on Wednesday, where people had the time to look at that, because not a lot of students take the time to check their email just regularly, and that was helpful, so.
Yeah, so we can compile a presentation.
Do you want to do, you want to do that in December or January, look, is what we've been?
Yeah, December.
Okay, let's do it, let's plan on it. That's great. Great, thank you.
What was it, last, last time you did it, the responses were?
It had to be...
Couple dozen?
Thirty.
It was low.
Thirty to forty?
Yeah.
Are you still accepting?
Yeah. So you said there were seven questions? Can you just tell us what those seven questions were? Yeah, sure. So basically, I asked, do you know what the board of directors is and what they're responsible for? Have you ever attended a meeting? What's your favorite thing about R S U twenty-two, Hamden Academy? What academic class or program would you like to see H A offer that we do not already have? And if you could change one thing about H A for the better, what would it be? Do you feel well represented as a student? And do you feel adequately prepared for the future?
Nice question.
Very good. Okay, that's great, so we'll look forward to that in December. Anything else you want to add tonight?
Actually, I did, before I came here, I was with chorus students for chamber singers with Mrs. Chorales. We did go to a music festival today at Miss Alonsky, and after that, we were invited, which is, it was a really great honor, we were invited by people who run the night show for Channel Five, to come and perform for them on Channel Five, to be on a show on December twenty-second. So I just want to put that out there, I thought it was really important for the students, because I did see a lot, you know, enjoyment for that, and it's important for you guys to know it's my district.
Congratulations. That'll be fun to watch.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Trish is going to go over our financial report tonight.
You should have the report in your packet. For the, it's through November fifth, and at this point of the year, we're, in the fiscal year, we're a hundred and thirty days into the year, or thirty-six percent of the year has passed, with sixty-four percent remaining. And those articles that are affected by the fiscal year primarily are Articles Six, Eight, and Nine, so you can see, if those articles that were, were closed, with sixty-four percent remaining, or about sixty-six percent from those articles, so we're doing well. The transportation article has a little more money left in that, but that's because you don't start paying the big prices until the kids are actually back in school, so we do a sort of a prepayment in July and August, and then once we start transporting, we pay the regular monthly installments. We're fifty-one days into the teacher year, or twenty-eight percent, with seventy-two percent remaining. Those articles are primarily Articles One, Two, and Five, so if we look at those articles, we can see that we're in line on those articles, too. Articles One and Two, there were, the teacher's contract was settled, so we adjusted their salaries to the new contract rates, and that was done on the November second payroll. So this report reflects that change. Also, the merit pay was included in that, so.
That merit pay will be only a one-time thing. That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
That was about eighty...
Eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand dollars total worth of money.
So that, that article shows a little bit less because of that catching up that, for those salaries for the year. So all in all, at this point, we're doing well, everything's in line, we haven't had any major, anything major happen financially for the facilities, that, a lot of that is spent during the summertime, there's some things that we do during the summertime, we have some of the technology would be spent while the kids are out and we're preparing for the coming school year, the facilities, same way a lot of work happens during the summertime, so. near the facility, same way a lot of work happens during the summertime, so. If any, have any questions?
Any questions, Patricia? I would like to congratulate and thank Regan, Trish, and Patty, our payroll person. Because as Trish mentioned, last Friday was our first payroll. Now, we have about two hundred and ten teachers, if you were to take one or two. And to my knowledge, we had no complaints that the payroll was wrong. That's a major accomplishment. When you think about, you can transition all teachers into a new scale, the merit payout, make sure that's down to the penny, down to the nickel. So that was a very significant positive accomplishment by doing that. Yes. Okay, Karen, thank you.
Oh, great. Questions of board members? Here I am.
I just have one, something to share, I guess. I was looking at MDI's policy website. And at each, at the top of each of the policy categories, they had a little explanation of what each policy category was about. And I thought that would just, was helpful to me to read that. And I would just recommend taking a look at that and seeing if that could be added to our website.
MDIs and?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And another thing that's come up for me in looking and reading about board development. There was a suggestion in one of the best practices articles I was reading about attending staff in services on things that the staff are being educated about or introduced to. And is that something that the district does?
Principal's correct, if I'm wrong, but I do not think that's been our general practice as far as board members coming to those sessions.
Okay.
Anyone disagree with that up there? So no, Mary Ann.
Okay. And then my, my standard question. Pursuant to J I H dash R F, have you received or provided approval for requests for assistance from IS or CDP agents?
I have not.
Have you received any requests from IS or CDP or a law enforcement agent acting on their behalf for information about or access to any of our students?
No, I have not.
Any other questions of board members? We'll go right into committee reports and do finance.
So we met Monday afternoon this week. We reviewed our warrant article that just went over. We also reviewed our revenue report, pretty basic. We talked about the proposed warrant article transfer that we'll be making as soon as our audit is done. It's actually, there's a few articles that every year we need to move a little money around to make those articles come out in the, well, we need, we can't end up with an article in the negative. So we have to move in. And we discussed by statute fourteen eighty-five subsection four, how it is our school board right to do that. I know in the past, we've had some critics about, critics as far as asking questions about why we're doing that. If we were not to do that, every warrant article would have to be fluff to the point where we would have sufficient funds in there at the end of the year. So in my opinion, you'd be looking at three or four hundred thousand dollars of money over the fourteen articles in order for us to do that. So that's something that we can do. We do not have to, we don't have to move salary line to salary line. We discussed whether we may want to do that, but we don't have to. But just so you know, that will be coming up in a future, probably sometime in December, we'll be doing that.
Historically, didn't we do that at least once a year, right?
Usually around.
Near the end of fiscal year, just to make sure everything is all?
Yeah, we've always, it's always been done typically around audit time. So, and we discussed why we didn't do it maybe earlier in the year. But if we did it earlier in the year, we may end up having to do it again. I don't know if I can explain it. Next Thursday or?
This is usually where we're in the summer, we do this, right?
Yeah, we get the.
Right.
Yes, yes.
We discussed our, we just kind of had an update on our health insurance. And then talked about policy review. And we looked at some policies. There's actually some.
Policies and resolutions, weren't there?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
And one of them was from MSAD eleven, and we're going to be looking at that and sending it to policy.
Budget committee.
We met last Tuesday, we met after the building committee, elected chair. It was mainly a planning session where we talked about starting earlier this year, rolling our budget. Maybe doing it a little bit differently with how we dig into some of the details. Kind of had an accelerated crash test last year trying to get, I think, EAC meetings in fairly short periods of time. We felt it would be better to spread it out a little bit further and tackle the, the less likely to change articles or the less controversial first, you know, get them out of the way early and get people in the motion of going through that discussion and tackle the ones that are fluid. And I think we identified that two years ago, there were eight outstanding items that were out of our control, including the school funding formula when it would be announced, evaluations, multiple things. That really, we couldn't establish a budget without having all those variables known. So trying to time it so that those elements could come online in the face of the discussion. And that's a pretty challenge every year. It may be a challenge this year as well. We looked at having sort of built the discussion modules in the presentation. They came out of it at the very end of the session last year to take a little more time this year to polish the presentation so that it's a little easier to understand. There's a lot of data last year and we didn't really have a lot of time at the last minute, if you will, to compress it in soundbite. It takes more time to make it less than it does just to do the data dump. So I think we'll work on that as well.
I do want to accentuate, if you look on your minutes, the seventh grade bullet up from the bottom, we have received word that the main state retirement contribution from the employer is now increasing by point one nine percent. And I want to back on what Rob mentioned before. Five years ago, the employer paid nothing for retirement. And now we're showing an increase of point one nine. So you can see the commitment that's required now of the taxpayer and local boards is increasing each year. So just note that, I don't know what that dollar figure is yet. We'll certainly show that when we have the bite of presentation. But the retirement contribution from RSC twenty-two is increasing by point one nine.
Great. Thank you, Rob.
I think one, actually one piece I left out was post, a lot of, we've had town manager shifts in both Winterport and Hamden and getting Regan and budget committee folks and others that want to attend to have those conversations start a lot earlier so that people are aware of what's coming down the line for budget in advance. I think we did a pretty good job of that last year, had a rocky start two years ago. Prior to that, it was almost adversarial. So I think we've come a long way to getting, getting better at that.
I just wanted to point out, you know, no matter how much we plan ahead and when we start a budget meetings, we really, can't really do anything until that EPS model comes out. And when is that?
Well, by law, it's supposed to be March fifteenth.
Yeah.
But to my knowledge, they've never met that law.
Right.
The other thing, well, that's true. The good news this year, we do know what the salary figures are. The other thing that we don't know, usually until the May timeframe, is the Anton Blue Cross Blue Shield rate. So the moving parts are usually Anton Blue Cross Blue Shield and ED two seventy-nine. Those are the problematic ones.
Is that retirement that you just mentioned, any chance, any of that would change with a new governor coming in?
It could, it could. But we, but we know it's increased right now. And then, a lot of things can change in the next four, five, six months. You know, we'll have a, I anticipate we'll have a new commissioner around the middle of January. Commissioner of Education, that is.
Unless it was taken as emergency legislation, the new legislation wouldn't take effect until like September of this year.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Athletic committee, Keith.
I don't think we've met since last.
Thursday.
October thirty.
All right.
But you didn't report on it, did you?
Oh, I reported, that's right. I reported out on those last, if there's any questions on, on the official minutes. I took minutes because we met prior to that meeting.
Yes.
And I reported out on those. But if there are any questions on anything anybody sees there.
We did, as a side note, Mr. Raymond, we had a good report from the NPA on our hosting of the competition this weekend at HA, the soccer tournament, is right?
Yes, four, four games, four really good games, as a matter of fact. Even though the weather was not great, we had a good turnout. All the teams that came in were very supportive in the new field. They really enjoyed themselves. They were very complimentary of the facility and the workers. So we got, as a matter of fact, three emails just in the last couple of days of how, they were all very complimentary of everything.
I did have one question. When I read this, you were talking about the cost to us to host those events. And have you guys nailed down the actual cost yet, or is that still a work in progress?
Well, the cost.
The cost to RSC twenty-two.
We charged three hundred per game, is that true?
We ended up, we charged three hundred fifty dollars for the facility itself and seventy-five dollars for the quarter potties. And then, security was billed by the town. So we, we ended up with four hundred twenty-five dollars.
I'm just wondering, in terms of, when we're looking at rental fees, if we're looking at your time, Fred's time, beyond your average work week, are we taking into consideration how much you would?
We're completely separate from that. That, there are, there are employees that NPA pays at a set rate when you work outside of your regular job. And that is completely separate. So that's not in the Hamden Academy or the RSC twenty-two expense.
So when we have an event and we have lights on, there's a cost associated with that?
Yes, that's part of the rental fee that goes to RSC twenty-two.
Right. So I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is if we're looking at expenses versus revenue, if the actual revenue is true revenue or if it's just offsetting the cost, is what I'm, how we explored that to see if we're billing enough.
That I don't know, because I don't have access to the electrical bill for lighting.
Just wondering if you.
We had that discussion, though, in finance.
We did, yes, we did.
Because if we start charging anymore, St. Joe's is free and Houston is free. And this won't come through.
Yeah, we did discuss that.
And you know, as long, you know, as long as it's not costing us any money, I mean, there's, I drove through the parking lot on Saturday. Considering it was raining about two inches an hour when I was there, there was a lot of people here. And if it hadn't been raining, I'm assuming there'd be a lot more. But, you know, that, that's a lot of value to the community.
The booths don't make a lot of money.
No, I don't disagree with that. I just want to make sure we're not, we're, at least.
We paid a lot of money on this turf, and you know, we don't want to use it all up real fast.
Let me see if I can find out with Trish and Regan on that. I'll follow up on that.
So it's not three hundred dollars a game, or three twenty-five a game, it's three hundred dollars for the whole day?
It was, it's three fifty, it was three fifty for the whole day.
For the day. For the day.
We are inconsistent, though.
It's not per game.
It was brought up in this meeting. We are inconsistent about charging, though, at the gate. Like some JV games aren't charged because we don't have anybody to physically man the booth. So we're kind of inconsistent on games we charge for students. I think she's getting free anyway. But in terms of charging, flight JV hockey, field hockey, things like that, we don't charge.
And some of it was, they weren't getting enough people in there to justify the person made a payment to charge them.
But I think we ought to look at a way to do that, I, I think.
I mean, there's, there's sports in, like, like field hockey, I was talking to somebody that their daughter played in college. They don't have enough people at a college, how it feels like getting to charge.
Soccer, baseball, we charge a baseball at Maine.
Yeah.
It's, it's free, anybody that wants to go. Softball, field hockey, soccer.
I know parents have said to me, though, when they go to, like, to see their kid play at another school, the visitors, everybody's charged to get in. And we just don't.
I would say it's hit or miss. I think one of the challenges we have in our site alone because of our parking spots and driving, that people will park and just kind of walk to spots. A little bit like a sieve. But I would say that we, I think, consistently across the board, every place is hit or miss. I went to a lot of soccer games this fall, home and away, and there's just, some places just don't charge. And I think it comes down to that. Who is going to man it? And if you're, you've got a parent volunteer group that does it, great. If not, you're paying for it somehow. Easy to charge for indoor events, much harder to charge outdoor events.
I do think we should look into, like we discussed in Athletic, about letting our students go to the.
Absolutely. Whether you play a sport or not, I would think students should be willing to.
Season passes for families still a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I have a settlement for season five.
Not a season yearly, yeah.
Karen, your, just your point about the wear and tear. I mean, it's like getting reimbursed for gas versus getting reimbursed for gas and wear and tear in a car. Fifteen years from now, when we roll the field again, people will wonder, well, why don't we squirrel in the way based on user speed, et cetera. But I do agree that there's a benefit that I think people understand. None of us will be sitting around that table in fifteen years. But it's, it's going to, that conversation will repeat itself. And I don't know if we made a commitment to put into that community fund. Isn't there money now going into that fund from the sponsor? Do we ever?
There will be as soon as we increase our participation in the science campaign, yeah.
That's right.
And then, and I think there has been a time sold, but.
Yeah.
And that ad hoc committee has met once, I know.
Thank you. Okay, building committee, Alan.
Yeah, we met on October thirtieth. Chris Carson from Hamden Electric did a presentation on the electrical system that serves this Hamden campus, or serves the superintendent's office, McGraw and Weatherby. I think it was built in nineteen sixty-nine or about in that timeframe, and it needs some repairs. And there was some work done on it, but it was Anne Legassi's husband who directed, put together that. He works for the Mirror.
Yes.
And he used their software to put the other information for us a year ago. But it does need some upgrading from the safety aspect. The issue is, how much money do we want to spend until we know what's going to happen with the McGraw Weatherby building project? Because that can have a drastic effect on whether we even need a large part of this electrical system that's serving us. So I guess our approach is to kind of look at it, if there are some real safety issues, let's try to take care of it as cost effective as we can for now. You could easily spend in the millions to upgrade our system, you know. Just some of the minor things he was talking about the other day, we're running a couple of hundred thousand dollars, so. So I guess we do need to do something with it, but we want to be aware of what's going to happen with our building project before we go.
So whether we meter it out over a couple of years to harden the system and work it into our annual budget process, which is roughly a sixty-six, thirty-four percent split, or just roll it into a capital improvement project, which is roughly the same split, and then deal with it as part of that project. I think those are costs that typically, particularly with a, with a major school construction project, tendable power is one of the major components that you have to satisfy. And that's clearly an area that's deficient based on what's out there. That would have to be addressed. At least, at least half of that network would have to be addressed if that were to happen.
And we own the system. The Mirror has no responsibility for any part of it. So if something goes broke, it's ours to fix. And that could be an issue with trying to keep the school healthy.
On a positive note, we did identify some simple measures that can be taken just to make some of the current infrastructure safer from plows or vehicle impact. So we're not likely to have an alley just built with some accident.
Were you saying, Rob, that, that getting the funding for this, for the project would?
It would roll right into the.
It would roll into the new project.
It would roll right into the new project.
Wouldn't be, have anything to do?
If, but if we said we're going to spend a million dollars over the next ten years and work it into our budget on the infrastructure, then we'd have to share. If, but if we said we're going to spend a million dollars over the next ten years of working into our budget on the infrastructure, then we'd have to share costs with the state, it's, it's either do it that way, and pick away, but something like that, it's cheaper to do it all, you know, and it felt smooth and piecemeal. Again, what, what we were talking about is, there's some things that, uh, had a, had a failure that had to be repaired in an emergency, and you can't get the parts for some of the things now, so it's that old, so we really, you don't want to scratch too deep into it, or you're going to have to do the whole thing anyway, so, to wait, and then put it in the wrong place potentially, if you do or don't know there's a school project, you wouldn't want to put all that money in the ground and have to do it, so. We're kind of doing a repair and do the safe elements first, and hold off on the rest till we see the results in a bigger project.
And the other issue is, we have overhead wires, and then we have a fair amount of underground actually serving the buildings, and to really do it, to really design it better, however, we need to have all of it underground.
Hmm.
It's, it's safer, especially with young children around, and it's also much cleaner to use, you know, and it can potentially last longer, so, but it needs to be looked at in conjunction with our entire construction project.
Amanda.
Sorry.
Um, the Education Committee met right before this, I was a little bit late for the committee, so I'm going to ask the other members who were involved already to fill in where I missed.
Um, we, uh, have put in, there's been a grant application put in for a regional instructional, uh, instructional coaching project, so, um, Sue O'Brien, Sue O'Brien is our current coach, and this would be an opportunity to train more coaches, um, as well as additional coaches within, um, that would serve the community.
So, it's a collaborative project with other, we'd be able to collaborate with other districts, I'm looking at Mary because this is a part of the unit, um, which would also satisfy that incentive to collaborate with other districts in the area and share resources. Um, we spent the majority of our time, however, talking, reviewing the state testing results for each of the schools, uh, each of the principals, uh, almost all of the principals, but an opportunity to go over their state testing results over the past three years. Um, I just want to say, year, every year, I don't know why I'm surprised anymore, but I'm always impressed at the, um, real reflection and attention that, and thoughtfulness that the administrators give to these test results, and really, um, they spend a lot of time and put a lot of thought and energy into dissecting the pockets that, um, where we've improved, and trying to understand why we've improved, and how do we replicate, um, those areas of improvement, as well as where we have gone down, and try and better understand what is causing that, um, and then immediately kind of remediate some of the issues that they have seen. Um, each principal was able to give us those details for their school, as well as some solutions that they have moving forward. Overall, we are doing quite well as a district in most places, we're above where the states expect, like, above where the state averages are, um, with again, some pockets that are higher and lower. I think that's, uh, we discussed for a while, there's, um, in addition to the educational issues, there's a lot that goes into these test scores, so it's not just a test score, but, um, we have many challenges in front of us, including many social issues, which is not an excuse, but it is a reality, um, of what some of these kids are challenged with every day when they come to school, or when they do not come to school. So, again, the, I, I think, in my opinion, the administration's sort of fantastic job of reflecting upon this information and making adjustments as needed, I don't know if the other Education Committee members wanted to add to that.
There was also, a couple of the schools are going to be involved, they've received a grant to do some type of interactive, over the computer, um, coaching for mathematics in terms of having the teacher learn better on how to, um, get the student to be more involved and more interactive in terms of asking questions and go deeper in math, and this is something that, uh, is, is Sue O'Brien? Yeah, who's going to be trained on that as well, and then, um, there, there's a small group of teachers that will be involved in that, and it's something that's being done nationwide, but with just a small amount of schools.
Eighteen schools.
Yeah.
Across the country.
Using all, are they all using Invision, or is it-
No, this is a study put out by the America Institute of Research, and it's looking at, specifically at two things, it's looking at questioning during mathematics, and it's looking at student discourse, so it's really digging in a bit deeper, so, um, there's going to be professional development, and one of our schools will be this year, and the other one will be next year, but it's at the middle level.
We also, I will say that we got a, in a perfect world wishlist from each of the, um, administrators at their, when they gave their presentation about if they had this, how we could address some of the areas of deficit, um, which I will pass on to the head of our Budget Committee.
Mary, when do you think they'll be presenting the data to the board, like, usually present that, uh, over global view of your, of our district data?
Um, well, it, it's not going to become public until next week, and I won't be here at the December meeting, so probably I could do it in January, or I could have someone do it at my stead in December, if necessary.
Let me think about that, because we'll have our students present at the December meeting, and also to remind the board that Mr. Pease is going to present at our December meeting as well, so probably do it.
January it is?
Yeah, I guess it is.
January it is.
Excuse me.
Or February.
I'll put January down.
I don't know, whatever.
Question related to the Education Committee, um, how does the use of iXL, uh, either help or hinder the instruction and/or the teacher interaction with the student, because I know that it tracks not only answers, but time spent on answers, so that's valid, valuable data?
IXL is a program that provides additional practice for students, so if they have, um, a particular area where they might need a bit more experience, um, the teacher can assign that to students, sometimes it's done as, um, an additional activity in class, many teachers use it for students to be able to use at home as well, and we have it, um, utilize that in grades K through eight. Did I answer your question?
And, and if it is utilized at home, do we have, do we still have situations, I'm thinking our bandwidth pockets, where students may not have the ability to use it at home?
Well, that may be true, but one of the things that we do do is when we know we have students that aren't able to access at home, that's why we have kind of a combination of during the day, or maybe when students first arrive at school, or potentially, ideally, everybody would have access at home, but we can't guarantee that.
Good, Joe, Policy Committee, anything in addition to what's already on the agenda for review?
Um, I mean, the, the minutes, uh, you know, pretty accurate, it was a pretty, you know, lengthy meeting, um, you know, we're going to be, next month, we'll be, I guess next week, we'll be talking about field trips, that's going to be a very extensive discussion in terms of what we're looking after there, um, and, uh, but now, basically, when we get to the actual policies, I'll talk about this.
UTC, Alan?
Yeah, we've had two meetings since our last meeting, and the first one was on October tenth, and there was a lot of stuff that went on at that meeting, first thing was, uh, student population up there, initially, it was listed as six hundred and fifty-three students this year, and RSU 22 had a hundred and twenty-four, I know the current enrollment rate now is five hundred and seventy-seven, I don't know what RSU 22's current enrollment is, but there are students that signed up to go there and never showed up, and changed their minds, but that's still a healthy increase over the last-
Bill, do you know what our enrollment is at UTC?
Um, we're about a hundred and eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen.
Yep. Fifty or fifty-five some more.
The first thing, then, we approved an application for cooperative education agreement, which will be fully funded by the EPS, and we approved a medical assistance program, which will be fully funded by EPS, and that's available to juniors and seniors that are attending UTC, the CNA and the CRMAS are for seniors only. And then, the other, another great thing, and they, they partnered with Eastern Maine Community College to offer a business program, and it's for juniors and seniors, in their junior year, they would take classes at, uh, UTC, then their senior year of high school, they would take classes at Eastern Maine Community College, and the cost for that is about eight hundred and some odd dollars, and so, they either have to pay that, or if they're able to get scholarships or financial aid, but they do have to pay to attend. And so, when they graduate as a senior from high school, they will have a certificate in, in, uh, small business development, they can then go to EMCC for one year after high school, complete that program, and have their associate's degree in applied business management, and associate, and applied science, and the advantage of that is, at that point, they would have thirty-six hundred dollars invested, and have associates degree, and that's fully transferable to St. Joseph's, U Main Augusta, U Main Fort Kent, and Hussin. So, then they could go to those schools for two years, and, and have a four-year business degree, they're greatly reduced cost, and that's, that's the whole point of the program, and I think the last I heard, there were eight students enrolled in it, but nobody could tell me if any of them were from RSU 22, I don't know that yet, I don't believe eight students are, I guess, to track them down, so they did that, and then, uh, the other thing they discussed is a program called digital badging, and that's kind of interesting, what it amounts to is a resume that students put on LinkedIn, and instead of a prospective employer just reading your paper resume and seeing, oh, you got an A in speech, there'll be an actual video of you delivering your speech in class, and the same thing can be done with other classes, if you wrote term papers, they're posted as part of your LinkedIn digital badge, and, uh, it sounds pretty interesting, and UTC is really leading the state charge on that here in Maine, to get that going, so they hope that, I think that could have a real positive impact on the students up there. Then we had another meeting, uh, November first, last week, and there wasn't a lot that went on, they, we approved a couple of, uh, policies regarding, uh, medications and, and who can give them to the students, and that was about it last, last, the last meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
FAQ role review, has the Matt-
Correct.
Education Foundation, um, has not, Spruce Board?
Spruce meets tomorrow night at six PM, I am out of town, I cannot make it, um, if anyone is interested in attending a Spruce Board meeting, meeting tomorrow at six PM, I will give you all of the details.
See you, Amanda.
It's actually kind of interesting.
It is a great collaborative group.
It is a collaborative group, you get to meet, uh, people from other boards all over the area.
Great. Um, Wellness Committee, I don't believe we have anybody here for that, um, and Community Relations Committee, we have minutes, Scott's not here, are you able to give enough, or Jim's not here either?
Let's pick on Mr. Savage, Nate, anything you want to add to the Community Relations?
Sorry, got me on that down. Yes, we talked a little bit about, um, um, we actually brought up the tariff, and as, as a way, Marion, if you can remind, I think we talked about, um, getting, um, something out, um, some PR about, um, we've heard, you know, there's a lot of talk, um, about sustainability and, and the ability to, to, um, um, not be in the same position, we were as a board ten, fifteen years from now asking for more money, so. Here are the steps, it's kind of the path that we've, um, been laid out, here are the things that we are, have accomplished, and here are some of the things we're going to work on, um, we also talked about getting information out on the budget, um, stuff like that, um, FAQ, do you remember anything else that we talked about?
Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Thank you. Policy considerations, Joe.
So, um, looking at IKF, policy IKF, that's graduation requirements, it's a first second reading, um, no changes were made to that from the, uh, first time, and that's what we talked about over the past couple of months, about the fact that, uh, we're, uh, moving away from, you know, basically mandatory, um, standard space, um, just kind of putting it in there, um, so that's the exact same thing that's been kept before, so I would move for, adopting a second reading of IKF graduation requirements.
Any discussion? Marion?
I just want to explain, I had to, a few people, um, the, um, vote that I made last time, and I'm going to make this time, um, I'm not going to vote in favor of it, because I think it is a step backwards, um, but I'm not going to vote against it either, because I don't think the structures are in a place to support it, uh, both at the state level and at our local level, so I'll be abstaining, and that's the reason why.
Yeah, I just want to remind people too, that this is about the proficiency-based diploma, which is different than the proficiency-based education, so, we're going to continue on the path of proficiency-based education with this district, and we're dropping the requirement of the proficiency-based diploma.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? And we have one extension, two extension listers left. Motion carries. Next.
Alright, so, uh, the next one we have is the Evaluation Superintendent Guidelines, CBI dash R, uh, and, uh, that came up a few months ago, and, uh, there's a lot of language that, uh, you know, people wanted to have kind of adjusted, and so, we took it back to committee, and we've looked at it for a couple of months now, um, what I've, what we've tried to do is to make the, uh, as you can see, there's a number of changes, um, try to make it a little more consistent in terms of, you know, the, uh, timeline, um, and, uh, making it clear that, you know, when it's going to be the ad hoc committee, and when it's going to be the school board that's going to be acting, um, and, you know, obviously, and it's mostly what it was really focused on, is, you know, trying to make the timeline more clear, um, you know, one of the big things, you know, is that, um, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're having that final meeting for, uh, approving, you know, contract for the superintendent, when it comes to that, you know, I think it's in July is when the deadline is, but it has to be done, and so that's part of what's taken into consideration there. I would move that, uh, the adopt CBI R, uh, it's just unfortunate that Wall is not here, but if we get Wall, we still have approval at the committee meeting.
Some motion asks for a second reading and adoption.
A second.
Discussion.
I, I will say that I was one that had some problems with the timeline, and some of the wording before was on that committee, this is much clearer, even with all the cross-ups, I was kind of hard to follow the times, or what were the rest of it, but it made a whole lot more sense, and looking at, knowing that we're going to have a, a two-pronged approach-
Right.
Going forward, which we did not have before, this laid it out a lot more clearly, and, yes, that was done very well.
Marion?
So, I just had a clarification question, under where it says board preparation, it talks about a composite evaluation, and then, under the performance objectives, it talks about a composite profile, are those the same things?
I don't know, um, because that wasn't something that was really brought up at, you know, the committee meeting, um, that question, and, and, so I would, I would go to John or Marion.
John, John, wasn't that, wasn't that the composite, was the information we'd get back from the board members, the ad hoc committee would get back, and they would, they would make a composite, or make a profile, and then would, would present it.
Right, that's correct.
You're correct.
I, I believe that's what that- Are those two things the same, the composite evaluation and the composite profile?
Where's the composite profile?
I'm trying to find that, where is it now?
It's down under, uh, performance objectives.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah.
From the board.
A written statement of the interpretation of the composite profile, that we'll receive the composite profile from the board.
And where was the other term, Ariane?
At the very top, under board prep. And I just picked this up this time, reading it through, it's just, and I was, so it says, um-
Word profile appears several times.
Yeah, number two, at the second meeting in January, the composite evaluation results of the individual board members' opinions will be presented, are those the same things?
Right, and I think, I think the, you know, I'm just trying to interpret, so John, how can you- I think, I think the, no, I'm just trying to interpret, so John, help me with this. Think the composite evaluation is what you would be given an evaluation to do and then it would be brought together and then a profile would be made from that evaluation.
Okay, so the evaluation is a tool.
I believe the evaluation is tool and the composite profile is all the information that has been compiled this summer.
That's the way.
Does that, John, does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
I'm hearing that profile is probably the language used in the prior policy because it's black.
Yes.
Make that assumption.
Since there's a lot of red, but yeah.
So once this is ratified, we'll clean this up.
Any other questions, discussion about this? I do want to thank everybody who played a part in this process. It has taken a long time.
I look forward to reading it without the straightened handle.
So we actually get to put it in the draft next year.
It'll actually be able to read it.
Great. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, thank you.
Okay, and so I just sent a quick email to kind of show you some of the prior language because what we have here for BG is this school board policy process. The reason why this came up is that the original policy, which is not reflected in the attachment, but is reflected in the attachment that I just emailed to, said that policies were defined under the...
National School Board.
National School Boards Association and that was out of date. And so what we had for our definition of policies is no longer what the National School Board Association was using for its definition of policies. And we looked at that definition and we looked at our definition and what the committee came to a conclusion was, was that we would, as you can see and hear, that we were going to basically adopt something very similar to what we already have, but make it a little more clear and take away the reference to the National School Board and just state policies are defined as the following. So there's not, so it's basically why we acted on that. So I would recommend adopting the policy BG. Make a motion.
Second?
Just, just for clarification, Joe, we're the first reading versus the adoption.
Yes, sorry. First reading.
Motion's for first reading. We have a second. Discussion, questions of board members? All those in favor? Thank you. Any votes?
And finally, back to public gifts and donations to the schools. This is first reading, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes. And the reason why, we had, you know, brought this to the board and then we took it back and the reason why is because we looked at the statute and the statute is mandatory and the language here is basically reflects the statute. And so we really can't do anything other than hold the statute as much as we might want to. So that's the reason why that was changed and we've just got these two very simple paragraphs. And I would recommend first reading, motion for first reading of KCD.
Any discussion, questions?
Just, I understand this is locked down, knowing that a gift that folks are told wait, we're going to put on an agenda, and wait can be a death knell for a gift, a small gift. Larger gifts usually are prepared much more in advance and I think this is kind of scary in a way. Are we able to meet within the guidelines of the law by allowing a tentative acceptance or thank you, essentially saying we'll bring it to floor, put it on the agenda so that it's an assessment, an acknowledgement and almost a thank you and confirmation. I hate to pause on a gift and have people run away. I don't know if you have any history on that as far as, I mean, what are we talking about for the typical gift and is this really going to jeopardize that from occurring?
The only one that I can remember over the last twenty years was the gift that we received here three years ago. Mr. Raymond helped me, the Tippett's, the Tippett's Foundation was over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Absent that, Rob, I can't remember.
We have one recently.
Oh, we did?
We had one, it was eight thousand, nine thousand dollar value from a state.
Last, yeah.
Last year.
I'm taking the three hundred thousand.
And what's the date of that statute? How long have we been at compliance?
Oh, well, it was, that statute, the one that we were looking at was for regional school districts. So, you know, it's a few years, but we've only been at RSU for five years, three years.
I don't remember.
Six years, six years. Thank you, Alan.
We've been doing it long enough to put the statute on the seven-year-old.
Okay, so only six years, less than ten, we're good. All right, we've had a motion and second, right? Any other questions, Marion? All those in favor? Great. Any opposed? Marion?
Before we leave policy, are you, do you have other things that you were going to address?
Well, we already did the policy committee and, no, for policies, that's it for policies.
I just have, you sent out or got, what got sent out was the evaluation form itself? Am I correct in all of our?
Yes. That was, that's the attachment to the evaluation of the superintendent.
Okay, so, and that's what has been used in the past, I assume? That's the existing one. So I just have a question. I couldn't tell, it didn't look like it was tied to the goals as stated in the strategic plan. It didn't look like there was any relationship between the evaluation itself and the goal...
Are you talking about the superintendent evaluation?
Yeah.
That hasn't been used before.
That hasn't been?
The one that was attached in the packet is a new, brand-new tool.
Okay.
It's not what we've been using in the past.
Okay. Is it what we are going to use?
Yes, now that we've approved that policy, this year will be the first year that we use this tool.
I think someone referred, that'd be a kitty pig in this one, right?
Yeah, the kitty.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that was a few months ago.
So I guess I do have some concerns that I didn't see, although I didn't look through it thoroughly. And certainly they weren't identified if they were somehow reflective of the goals in the strategic plan. Am I making sense?
You are. There's a history there, Marion. In the past, the old tool, really, Rick used to report out during his evaluation, the strategic plan goal outcomes. And we've had years of conversation at the board as to his goals should be more focused on his responsibilities as a superintendent and the strategic plan goals are more about a team approach and report out. So we, we wanted to separate the two while they're related and they should somewhat align. That, so actually that's kind of the way we, we had them doing it and we're moving away from that because we wanted to focus on superintendent professional role.
Okay. I will say that when we are having conversations about the board self-evaluation, which are, we are talking about tying that to the strategic plan.
Which makes me think a lot.
Yeah.
Has that group met yet?
So, does every board member have a copy or is that provided as part of the evaluation process of the job description for the superintendent? Do we have a?
We do have a job description. I don't recall in the process that we ever distributed a job description though. I think we went with evaluation tool and that was it.
As, and so that would serve as the job description?
Certainly we can, we can distribute the job description, that's my initial.
Yeah, it's been a long time probably since we've looked at the job description, probably a couple decades.
Yes.
And so we will be looking at that and updating if needed.
We'll fine tune this over the next twelve months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The last guy is blowing the wall, too.
All right, great. New business. And we're going to discuss and act on the UTC.
Yes, we need to, on an annual basis, appoint our representative. As you all know, Alan's our representative, so I do recommend that we continue with Alan being our representative to the United Technology Board. We need board endorsement of that. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Excuse me.
Any discussion? Alan, do you agree? Okay, any, all those in favor? Alan, you're a great representative, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alan. And speaking of board policy, we are required to approve overnight field trips by the board directors. You can see the list of overnight field trips here. They're hopefully self-explanatory. I would ask for the board endorsement of the corresponding exhibit. So move.
Rick, previously you said you had concerns about finance.
Yes, thank you. That's why I held it. These do not have any financial commitment from the school district budget, they're all self-sufficient. Thank you, that was a good question.
We have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Marion, any other questions or discussion?
I would just like to think about that, the Burke Island trip for grade five is still only one team. I would love to see us working towards the goal of getting it back to the entire fifth grade.
That was, yeah, I was going to say, Jen, there's a story behind that.
I know what the story is, but I just want to make sure we keep.
So the Burke Island trip, honestly, this year is the last year because Burke Island themselves have said that they're phasing out and they're unable to accommodate our full team. We two have this interest and it doesn't feel right that one team gets two and one team does not. And so we are honoring the trip this year. It is the big voyage and we are looking at an experience which all fifth graders will have that's common and rooted in those same academic standards. And so the team is actively looking for some of those opportunities. So I very much appreciate that feedback. We heard that from parents and so we are making a change.
Jen, is the other team in fifth grade still determining what they're going to be doing?
Yes, and so that team always does the diorite program, which is wonderful. And so they get that heat life piece. I will say it's not an overnight trip and so typically they've gone to the Trenton Wild, Acadia, but we are not doing that. And so we are looking into possibly staying right at Acadia, the College of the Palenta because they have wonderful tours there and also going downtown to see the... They're just wonderful academic opportunities that are still fun, but academically.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It relates to field trips, I guess it's the, the school activity fund and the movement between schools and how those overlap or mesh. I know in some cases when events are held at different schools, that school body has to be brought. And does that, is that covered by us in our budget? Does it come through an activity fund or is it money that has to be raised by parent-teacher groups?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
Cost of busing kids, and I think...
Within the district?
Within the district.
Yeah, last year we absorbed.
We absorbed, yeah. In the district, yes.
Any interdist, any inter-district movement so that, whether it's band or concerts or things, there's no reduction of activity fees for one group to attend what others can just walk to? Because that would almost take away from being able to do an event out of district, if you will, if it all came under that same bucket.
My answer, my answer would be that we would not, I don't want to say this, we would not have that entity incur any cost. It would be district-supported.
Dr. Glenn Cross, do you, are there any expenses, do you believe that either Wagner or, I don't see a...
Yeah, we've had district support for things, I'm just trying to think of some museums. Like to take our fifth graders over here to go to Christmas concert, or something like that, right? We've had district support on those things that are common, that all, all students would attend. Individualized, like specialized events, we do fundraising for, like that would be specific.
That's typical of any school.
Yes, I'd say that's very accurate, but I can't think of an exception to that.
I have one, the, the trips, the spring training at Disney for softball and baseball?
Yes.
What, what exactly is this? Some kind of...
They are, they're taking an opportunity to be down there and train and it's all fundraised on their own through their organization.
Train.
Train for the upcoming season and have the experience to be down there.
Go to Disney and this is all during school vacation, I'm assuming?
Yes.
It's not before?
Yes, it is. No, it's all during vacation.
Okay. So the eleven, okay.
I thought, yeah, I thought that looks early.
Well, it's one day early because it's Friday, I know because I'm going to Disney that week too, but the eleventh, the eleventh is a Thursday, the twelfth, I think they don't even go to school. I think it's a, or a half-day maybe.
I'm going to bring up the calendar.
Is this, is this something we've done before, training?
I don't, I don't believe so, Mr. Raymond.
What's the, what's the rationale behind sending just the experience of it? Is this something that they're planning to do every year from?
This is something that they haven't done in a while, but it's something I think that they have interest in. It's something that some of the bigger schools do, bigger programs do. So I don't know what the consistency is. I think they probably find as it takes a lot of effort to raise that amount of money, but I don't know how often they'll look to do it.
Just for clarification, Friday is an early dismissal day, it's the eleventh. Now, I'm going to show my age here. When I was a principal in Prescott thirty years ago, Prescott High School did that thirty years ago, every year. Not that that's right, I'm just telling, I do know that. They want to get in Prescott.
Does it really say French Club is going to France and Spain? I remember we used to huddle up and go to Quebec.
All right, so you're all being stopped, showing your age.
Yes. Want chaperone?
Going to Quebec was a big deal, they're going over to...
All right.
But anyway, getting back to Joe's question, there's no financial money in front of the budget.
It's door-to-door.
All right. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, great, thank you. Retreat activities.
Marion has given an exhibit, so I'll turn it over to Marion to convey her sentiments here.
So again, I sent out an email and I'm not going over to everyone, I won't repeat all of that. I've just been struggling to form some kind of framework so that all of what I'm doing as a board member makes sense to me. And in doing that, I found this resource, which I purchased and it's wonderful and I'm happy to share it with anyone that would be interested. And that helped me develop this framework that you have in your exhibits. And the thing that popped out to me as I developed this were the two blanks. And the one, the, both of them are central to what the National School Board Association and our own superintendent and assistant superintendent say is critical to school board functioning. And that is the core values, what the community, not just the board, but the community as a whole feels its core values are. And that work was done a while ago when the core values of respectful, honest, ethical, responsible, compassionate were developed. But what's missing are academic core values. So you had in your pile of things that were left in front of you, just a list of words that I pulled from different educational institutions that they use to define their academic core values. So I shared this with Amanda, who suggested we take it to the education committee and start there in terms of developing a set of maybe four or five core values that we believe are fundamental to the work that RSU twenty-two is doing within its learning community. And from those core values, those core values kind of become the compass that you use to create the vision and the vision is the destination. As we heard today in the education committee, if all things were perfect, as if all things were perfect, as if we had all the resources we wanted all the time and the year or the day that we wanted, what would it look like? So when I talked with Karen and Rick about this, they suggested that it become part of what we do with the retreat, to work on that. But I do hope that we will involve students, especially in the, what the academic values, what academic values the students would find important, but also the larger community. I would like to hope that we would involve parents in kind of looking at that, what they feel for, for their children would be a core value. And then from those two sets of behavioral and academic core values, we develop the vision. So that's what I propose.
Thanks. And typically we, we did look and our strategic plan, the last week, the last date that we have on it is July two thousand seventeen. But typically every winter time around January or February is when we start initiating that process. that process and our current strategic plan is good through 2020. So, this is just a review and revamp at our retreat and so it won't be as intense, so this might be a great opportunity to kind of start and set the stage for that work, looking at where we want to be and if timing's right, then we'll have the student survey data to help inform that conversation, which will be great. So, we had talked about that with Mary Ann and we're going to be talking with Tim Keyes and hope that he can help facilitate that conversation again because I think he gives tremendous love keeping us focused and moving forward. So, we will be looking at when we want to have that retreat this winter, but most likely, I have a feeling it's going to have to be a special meeting, given that we have so much business to do during our regular scheduled meetings, so stay tuned on that, we'll probably bring it back for discussion in December to try to set some meeting dates on that.
So, go.
Yeah.
The next item is, I'm sorry.
I just want to share one thing, Rick and Regan did a workshop, which I didn't attend, I wished I had afterwards, but I didn't attend at the conference a couple weeks ago and, but they had this wonderful handout, so if anyone would like to see this handout, it was really on school board's responsibilities and both helping school, new school board members or school board members focus on what their role is and it's a wonderful resource, so I encourage you to contact Regan.
I can send, I'll send that out, matified electronically. Thank you.
It was, it's really well done.
We had, actually, the other thing, we had, when you go to those concurrent sessions, 50 is a good number, we had about 85 people at 10. It was a great conversation for about an hour, so we had some good receptivity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is basically in compliance with main school management and the dental program that made some adjustments, this requires board action, as I mentioned, I'm thinking John earlier, the only two people covered by main school management's dental plan is David Green or myself, all the other people are covered by Delta Dental, which is the teachers' plan, so I'd ask for your endorsement of the adjustments or amendments, I should say, to the plan as constructed by Main School Management Association dental trustees.
Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Great, any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Tony's opposed, Trish? Any abstentions? All right, and now we have meetings, or dates to set.
Joe, we don't have a policy committee.
Should be next Wednesday, 6 o'clock.
Okay. Next Wednesday would be, where are we, the 14th? 6 o'clock policy.
Rob, I don't know if we can talk to you, I can't, the 27th and we have said 26th or the 27th and you guys were available the 26th, the Monday, I'm going to be out of town on the 27th, I didn't have my phone with me. So, the 26th, are you available 26th?
Oh, yeah.
Is that Regan?
I can't, I think we were talking 26th and 27th.
We said 26th to 27th and then you guys just said the 27th and I thought that would, I mean, I didn't see anything until I got home and looked at my phone and realized I have...
26th, I think Regan can do it, I'm going to just make sure.
I, he emailed her about it and she said she would talk to you, but then to another occasion.
So, we'll put it to the 26th now, the policy committee on the 14th. I think other than that...
We don't have a more...
I was going to say he put, yeah.
No, but we do have another, we have a finance committee scheduled, we'll talk back in a minute here. Maybe not. No, we must not, no. Well, ad hoc athletic committee for the signage campaign is meeting on the 19th.
19th of November?
That's on schedule.
And finance, will you need to meet before the, or to review the audit?
Yeah, we must have, maybe we were waiting for that, we, before we made, we didn't make a, did we not make one yet?
We didn't, no, I was, I just pulled up the minutes from the finance committee meeting already, the schedule.
They're probably working to do it after, so...
Yeah, so, we'll meet again here before we have another finance committee meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Any other meetings we need to set dates for?
The ad hoc, the self-eval, board self-eval, ad hoc committee needs to meet again, but Jess and Jim are not here, so I'm sending them over. Duda will be sent.
With that said, we do have an executive session, so I would ask for a motion to go into the executive session, please.
Motion to take this session for MRSA subsection 405, 6A, to discuss public...
Investigation.
Investigation, oh, there it is.
All right, all those in favor?
And also let the minutes note, Trish, then in the executive session, it will be Mr. Tracy and Mr. Regan.